Call the meeting back to order will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't have anyone wishing to address the board, it looks like, so we'll move on to approval the minutes of December 1st. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Onto approval agenda. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to remove 11A career service report?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion to amend and approve the agenda with the removal of career services report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. We'll move on to conflicts and interests. No new conflicts were presented. We'll move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items 10A through D?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That is approved. We move to the reports of the president. The Vet Tech is Dr. Emily. I haven't met her yet. This is Dr. Emily. Oh, thank you. I didn't know you were going to introduce her. Sorry about that.
Do you want to grab the microphone and sway it around?
Turn it towards your, yeah, then it's recorded too. Perfect. Thank you. Is this better?
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you, President Mickelson and members of the board. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the Vet Tech program for you. Just kind of give you a general overview of kind of the program for you. So it is a four semester program. Well, secondly, five, they do four semesters of coursework and then the last summer they do a six week, 16 week internship. So 240 hours out in the clinical veterinary practice that way. For enrollment, our second semester, so they're going to kind of in the middle of their first year. We have 25 students and the students that are finishing up the program with their last semester, we have 22 students. We are seeking accreditation through the American Veterinary Medical Association and we actually have our site visit coming up this end of this month on the 26th and 27th. And they let me know that they will let us know on like the announcement or the approval of it in April. It's a little hard to read, so I apologize. But for the curriculum, this just shows the four semesters of coursework and the types of classes they take. We have their intro class, kind of teach them what a veterinary technician does, medical terminology, anatomy and physiology along with veterinary laboratory. So running things like the microscope, the blood analysis machines, centrifuges, those kinds of things. Then we, they do take three gen eds that are kind of built in time throughout the course. Then we have anatomy physiology too. So that one focuses more on the large animal species. There's comparative anatomy. Veterinary laboratory too, which is just a build off of the first class. And then nursing and diseases, where they learn about the disease processes, common treatments or medications, procedures that way. Pharmacology, they learn all about the meds and what they'd be used for just because of the client education standpoint of their job. Lab animal and exotics, large animal one and two focuses on hands-on skills for production species. So your cattle, your horses, things like that. And we go into looking at operations for swine, modern dairy, cow, calf, and you've got operations for beef cattle. They take anesthesia, where they put the patients under anesthesia and monitor them. Then they have nursing and disease two, which is just the follow-up class to the first one. Imaging, so they're taking x-rays, learning how to use ultrasound machine, positioning those things. Surgical assisting, where they're assisting myself in the spays and neuters of pets. And then dentistry, where they're performing dental procedures on dogs and cats as well. And then they have that 16 week internship where we come back and review for their final clinical experience as well as their board exam. Then we just wanted to show some pictures of the clinic for you or the space. So on the left, you have the kind of our scrub pack area where they get the surgical packs ready. And then on the right side is our clinical lab. This is what if you have pets at all and they say take them to the back to do something, the clinical lab is really like the part of the vet clinic that they would be doing the treatments on, putting them under anesthesia and those types of things. Then you have our surgical suite. Like I said, we are performing spays and neuters at the school on rescue animals for the students to learn with. And then our radiology suite. So we do have dental x-ray, which is the most up to date x-ray, which we'll find in a practice also. We do have housing because we do keep the animals there during the week when they have surgical procedures. So we have housing for large dogs on the left and then smaller ones on the right. And then we have separate for felines so that we don't stress them out. You can see their housing on the left and then their exercise area on the right. And then we do have pocket pet housing if we were to house things like rats or gerbils, guinea pigs. We do, they do have to do some hands-on with chickens or avian species. So then we kind of house them there that time. And that's, oh yeah. And then we do have, this is a laboratory classroom. So you can see our blood analysis machines and our laboratory equipment on the wall on the one. And then every student has their own microscope while they're in the program so that it is more efficient and easier for learning. And then the other classroom looks just like that minus the microscope.
So is the exam a national one for Vet Tech? So.
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Awesome. And, go ahead.
I was just going to say, in South Dakota, to become a licensed veterinary technician, they do have to graduate from an accredited college and then take that fit knee, which is the veterinary technician national exam.
So the fourth semester after their internships will be your first class to go through that?
Yes. Yep. So we'll kind of have details and more info on that once they complete that this coming summer.
Awesome. And is a full class like 25 students or what would consider?
Typically, we start with 32 to 35.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. So some people dropped, some of them due to they just realized after they started the program that that wasn't the job that they thought it was. So since then, we've implemented that they have to do 25 shadow hours before they can be accepted into the program. And then now they write an essay just to kind of help them realize maybe why they want and make sure that they understand what they're starting.
What types of places do people do internships at?
So we haven't had any students do their internships yet. So we're still in the process of lining those up. But typically, it's small animal veterinary clinics. They can be mixed if the students have interest in the large animal side of it. But it is a time to really hone in those hands-on skills. So we just want to make sure that they're clinics that practice a high standard of care where they're putting catheters in their patients, where they're intubating, using all of the tools to monitor anesthesia, those types of things. But they'll just be local ones. A lot of things that's nice is a lot of clinics that are looking to hire, which is a lot of them, are willing to take interns. And then they can, it's good for the employer to kind of get an idea of that student and their work ethic and things like that. But also for the student to understand if maybe that's the clinic they want to work at. It's pretty common for veterinary technicians to get hired at the clinic they do their internship. So we're keeping that in mind for job placement as well.
Were you at a program teaching before or were you in private practice?
I was in private practice before. Yep. So I worked in Mitchell and a mixed animal practice and then in Hartford for a year in a small.
Well, welcome. It's nice to have your expertise and as a nurse myself, I remember my clinical instructors, the ones who had really practiced, I learned so much more from because they could tell you exact scenarios and, and things like that. So I'm sure that your experience in the classroom is very helpful to those students as well.
I'm hoping it is to the students. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Seeing none. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the veterinary tech program report?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Thank you, Dr. Stahl.
Thank you.
Onto strategic plan update report. Dr. Gritz.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson, members of the board. I want to just quickly thank Dr. Stahl for all of her help and leadership in, in launching that program. There's a lot that goes into the start of any program, but one where we did not have any facilities and, and really we're starting from ground zero. So thanks to her leadership and the solid work of our foundation to raise funding. And I think you saw some of the slides of the outstanding facilities we have right now. And we're excited that we have a waiting list for that program also. So hopefully that'll continue going forward. As far as the agenda item, our strategic plan update, I thought this would be an appropriate time to come before the board and provide you with an update on our ongoing development of a new strategic plan. Our current strategic plan ended in the end of 2021. So it was a five-year plan that was launched in 2016, frankly, right when I came to Southeast Tech. And so we've been operating under that plan. I think it served us well. But in terms of a comprehensive visit next year and visiting with our accreditation reviewers and our liaisons, they suggested that yes, don't wait for the accreditation visit before you start developing a new plan. Continue on as if that visit was not even on the schedule. on as if that visit was not even on the schedule. So we have done that. So we started this past summer with our planning activities and we were very fortunate. I was working with Rick Melmer, Leadership of South Dakota. He's been working with Southeast Tech and some of our senior leadership and, and some, in terms of helping the campus and direction of effort and working collaboration and so forth. And based on that experience, we thought he would also be a, a strong candidate and to help us with our strategic planning efforts. And very, very excited when Rick said that he would absolutely be willing to step in and, and help us with the development of a new strategic plan, if we would be willing to also have with him as a co-sponsor of the plan and facilitator of the plan, his colleague, and that's Mike Sebersma. So I'm going to introduce Rick Melmer from Leadership South Dakota and Mike Sebersma from Marzano Research and ask them to provide the update for the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, and thank you to the board for giving us a little bit of time today. As a former school superintendent, I first want to say thanks for your service to school board members. I was always grateful for dedicated board members during my time as a school superintendent. And I know that that's the role you folks are playing here in the Sioux Falls School District. So thank you for that. As Bob mentioned, the Southeast Tech approached me about working on a strategic plan with them. I was happy to do that. Look forward to being involved. Mike is a colleague of mine and I'll let him introduce himself and give you a little of his background. But we started work with Southeast Tech this fall. Actually, in September, we identified a 14-member steering committee. That steering committee consists of faculty members, staff, executive team members, students, and then some business and industry reps as well. So we have a nice cross-section of folks that are on what we call the steering committee. And that group kind of helps guide us through the process. And so we started meeting with that group actually in August and September. We developed a survey together. That survey went out to all constituent groups connected to Southeast Tech. We received about 900 survey responses back. And it was essentially kind of a SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, what opportunities exist for Southeast Tech, and then of course, any threats or challenges that they might face. So those survey results were taken in, packaged, and then shared with our strategic planning committee, of which both Ms. Mickelson and Baker were involved in that effort in early December. And they'll tell you maybe a little bit more about that when we get to that time. So in addition to the survey, that was kind of a wide net that we cast to get information back. Then we moved into focus groups and we met with six different groups of people that served as focus group members that represented some parts or some audiences of Southeast Tech. Faculty was one group, staff was another group, students, industry representatives, school district partners, that was the area, school districts, including Sioux Falls, that partnered with Southeast Tech in a variety of ways. And then the last group was what we called a community group, which is kind of a catch-all group of folks that maybe didn't fit any of the first five areas, but we felt were important people for us to talk to. So either Mike or I facilitated each of those six focus groups. They were about 90 minutes in length and we spent some time looking at the survey results and then spent most of the rest of the time saying, what areas do you think ought to be pursued by Southeast Tech in the future? And they gave us good feedback. So essentially, survey, cast a wide net, focus groups, a little bit more focused in there each of the six different areas. And then we had plans to spend time, a day and a half in December with about a 40-member strategic planning group that would help us develop and identify goals for the future of Southeast Technical College. And I'm going to let my colleague, Mike, speak directly to the time that we had in December. So.
Thanks, Rick, and thanks to the board again for taking some time to invest in understanding what Southeast Tech is doing here with the strategic plan. So as Rick mentioned, oh, by the way, Mike Sebersma, I work with a company called Marzano Research. So we do, we work, I think as Bob may have mentioned earlier, primarily in K-12 education, but we do a lot of improvement planning, strategic planning, as well as just education, research, professional development, those kinds of things. So that's my background. I was a middle school teacher, a middle school principal, and I've been doing consulting for more, a little more than a decade. So great to be a colleague to Rick and to be supporting this process. So kind of picking up where Rick left off with the process, we, we had a day and a half on December 17 and 18 where we convened a diverse group of stakeholders, community members, a couple of students, good representation from faculty and staff, a couple of board members here, foundation kind of leaders from around the community. And so the, the idea during that time was to kind of look at, analyze what all the focus groups had said. So as Rick said, we, we went from a survey, which was really broad, to a little narrower with the focus groups, to now narrowing it down even more and trying to say, out of all this input, what are a few goal areas that Southeast Tech really needs to prioritize in like the next three years for their strategic plan? And so spent a lot of time kind of orienting that group to what had been done so far, building some context, and then had a lot of good discussion analyzing kind of all the input that had been gathered so, so far up to that point. And then on the second day of this session, we really kind of pushed the group to narrow and ultimately came down with six priority areas. And it was, it was, it was a tough job because there are a lot of interests and a lot of opportunities for Southeast Tech to pursue. But I wanted to share with you just kind of a snapshot of what those six priority areas were. The first one is ensure academic excellence. And so as we think about kind of the programs that Southeast Tech offers and that sort of thing, making sure that those programs are excellent and relevant and that sort of thing was a key priority going into the next three years in this next strategic horizon. Increasing access. So we're looking at the kind of who's benefiting from Southeast Tech and their programs and making sure that Southeast Tech is a place for anyone in the region who needs to further their education, including all the diverse communities that are represented here in Sioux Falls and in the area. So making sure that access is, is there for everybody at the college. The third area was to improve employee and campus culture. So the idea there is if everybody in that community, faculty, staff, students are really proud of where they are, they love to go to work every day, they love to learn, that's contagious and students want to be there. And you can drive your programs and your enrollment that way. The fourth area was to grow partnerships, industry partnerships, community partnerships. There are a lot of ways that I think opportunities that the group identified for Southeast Tech to get more connected with more different groups in this region, particularly in Sioux Falls, whether it's, you know, kind of programs and internships and that sort of thing, or even facilities. Or for example, lots of, lots of input that says, you know, what, where's the gym? Like if kids want the college experience going to Southeast Tech, can they have that? And so maybe we're not building a gym at Southeast Tech, but maybe there's a partnership with an existing gym that, you know, being a student at Southeast Tech affords you the opportunity to be a part of, things like that. Fifth area, enhance marketing and awareness. To be the best kept secret in Sioux Falls is not a good thing, right, for Southeast Tech. So making sure that everybody's aware of it, what they can offer, marketing-specific programs and that sort of thing. And then finally, advancing student support. So when a student shows up on campus, they know where to go, they know what to do, they have all the academic, social, and kind of logistical supports that they need to persist, to graduate and to be successful there. So those were six areas that they, you know, decided were kind of high priority areas. There were things that are kind of rolled together in some of those things, but some that kind of didn't make the list. There was a lot of input that said, we need to invest in our facilities. When it comes down to the priorities, there may be some facilities work embedded in some of those, but that wasn't one of the, one of the top ones that the group came up with. So as I said, we got a lot of clarity on kind of what the priorities ought to be. We, we started to dip toes into kind of making some measurable goals out of those priorities, thinking about some action steps. That work is going to go on, probably with a lot of kind of faculty and staff input, people who are close to the work and know how to measure it, that sort of thing. So those will be the next steps, probably through January and February. And that'll be followed by an opportunity for the public to give input and feedback on kind of the draft plan before it's adopted and probably presented back to this board. So I, I know that Ms. Mickelson and Ms. Baker were part of the, the two, or the day and a half that we had in December. I don't know if it's appropriate or if you're interested in commenting on the experience you had, but wanted to invite you to do that too as part of this presentation.
I, I thought it was very, I was very impressed with, I told Bob this, the attendance and diverse group of people you did have from the community. I thought that was, I was really impressed with that because I thought there was a lot of input that wouldn't have normally been at the table for something at Southeast Tech maybe. And then I, I loved how this evolved into this six, because I was lucky enough to be there towards the end and see there were some other ones on the list and they changed names totally. They were maybe a subset of that and it rose above it because, for example, the enhancing, ensuring academic excellence basically wasn't really, it wasn't stated that way. And I think what everybody came to majority agreement was that if we don't have that, we can't do any of these other things. We can't fund these things. We can't do these things. So I thought it was very organic how the discussions arose because it wasn't like this is what was, came out of the focus groups and we just adopted it. It really did involve conversations and changes.
I'd say with that, each of those priority groups probably thought their area was of most relevance.
Yes.
And so that, that point being the level of ownership each of those groups took to ultimately make a difference. And that's that piece that was so organic. Because the one I sat on, they, they most definitely felt like if those, if those areas don't come first, the rest won't be able to take place.
Exactly.
So it's kind of interesting to, to observe that. And it was, it was very healthy and very healthy discussion.
Lot of great input. One thing that I think we are trying to help with in terms of being process stewards or process facilitators in this strategic plan is not getting too rigid. And so we know that there's more work to do. That may involve kind of re-examining the timeline for getting everything done. But we, we don't want to say, well, hey, we said by, you know, the end of January, we'd have a draft out. And so we'll sacrifice that quality product for a timeline that's kind of arbitrary. So we're kind of adjusting that. We want to stay with it, engage more people along the way and, and make sure that we have a, a plan that's actionable, that people are ready to, to move on. So. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Is that the end for the report or do you have more stuff on that, Bob?
No, that's it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the strategic, strategic plan update report?
The move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
I was just going to say, President Mickelson, thank you for your comments about the organic nature of this planning. I think that's one thing we can safely say is that we, we did not come in with four or five goals from the senior leadership team and really started with gathering data, as they said, with surveying and focus groups. And then at the start of that two days, I really didn't know what we were going to have. And that's a little, that's a little intimidating actually, because there's a lot writing on this. And in my comments this morning to the campus, and I made, I made the comment that I, my own personal opinion is Southeast Tech is at a crossroads right now. And we need your input as far as the campus community. We have these, you know, main strategic goals that have been identified. The work of the plan is really the action items underneath each of those now. And in our last Noel Levitt survey, I think one of the comments was there was not a lot of involvement in strategic planning and a lack of opportunity for planning. And they said, this is, this is, now is the time. This is the time. We are at a crossroads. We can't do business as usual because if we do, I'm afraid we're going to continue to see declining enrollment. Our population is shifting. The dynamics of Sioux Falls are shifting, you know, new programs and responding to the needs of industry needs to be our priority. And so I think that plan needs to reflect all of that. And couldn't be more pleased with their leadership and helping the campus. And the campus stepped up. And I'm glad both of you, Board Member Baker, you were able to be there as well. Thank you for that because I was so impressed with the students that participated. They really did their programs proud. The faculty and staff were there and the community members and industry representatives. There was outstanding participation. I was worried again that it would fall to the, the senior leadership to keep the conversation going. I don't think we had to speak during the, the whole meeting on just a couple of occasions because it was, it was very organic. And so we're very pleased where we are, but we also realized now the heavy lifting begins as we start to flesh out those programs. So thank you for your time. I, I hope that provides a better update to the board in terms of where we're at currently with that important process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else we could support? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We adjourned. Thank you.